A couple of members of staff, and certainly we'll get to our guest here in just a moment. So I'll ask that we take a look at the minutes of April 26, 2017, and would entertain a motion of approval of those minutes?
I'll move to approve the minutes.
Okay, so it's been moved, and seconded, any discussion on those minutes? Okay, seeing none, the minutes will stand approved as written. Lisa, thank you for that. Monthly reports, I did not grab the sheet off Anna's desk. Many of them are in, I think we're missing a couple. Today is the deadline. And Mr. Costello let the minutes reflect that he in fact is in. And we will make sure that those few that are missing are in over the next day or two. We have no public hearings this evening. We do have one guest, and that is for 1185 Empire Boulevard for Bay Landing Subdivision. And Jim, if you would tee it up from there.
Thank you, Tony. Tonight we have Dr. Jack Howlett and Hans Zolms, who are representing the Bay Landing Subdivision on Empire Boulevard. I'll just give you a quick history of it, and then Dr. Howlett can explain where he is. Dr. Howlett and Hans, I think a year ago or so, had applied for and actually are in the process of receiving. It's kind of been held on, put on hold for a period of time, but we're in the process of receiving a site plan approval for the development of 33 townhouse units at 1185 Empire Boulevard. And I'm going to let you explain why it's on hold, and what your issue is, and how you'd like to get it resolved.
Sure. So as you recall, we originally proposed 33 townhomes and 36 apartment units. And the apartment units which are going to be situated in the LaSalle Landing District. Board had some reservations about the apartment buildings, and we subsequently went forward with 33 townhomes. After, you know, receiving some bids for the site work, and you know, looking at the numbers more closely, you know, it's just not economically feasible for us to proceed with the 33 townhomes. So we're, you know, back before the board today to see if we can get the entire project approved.
So Hans, if you would, what was the major piece of that infrastructure that, you know, was surprising to you, or came in maybe more than what was anticipated?
Well, the, you know, the site work, you know, digging sewers and such and the fill that's there is going to be pretty extensive. Also, we have the roads that we're building in here to service those 33 units. Where there's quite a bit of distance here that you can see that we're covering. And, you know, to cover all that distance, and get all the site work done. It's just, it was coming in at roughly $60,000 a unit, was the price for the site work, which is just...
Site work only, not including the price of the lot?
Exactly.
So what's been approved? I know you're coming up on a year, almost a year since it's been approved.
If it was tabled by the board, maybe you can explain better than I as to, I know they were looking at some aesthetics with the building that you were working on, but primarily it was the issue of getting it approved and not being able to build it?
The issue, there really weren't any issues with the board. They wanted to see some materials of our aesthetics for the building to get a better visualization of that. At that same time, we were busy starting to gather up some financial information on a cost structure. We have built the identical townhome building, and just really very short time ago completed a project of those buildings. So we had a fairly good idea with building in the additional cost structures of just general increased building materials and labor costs, what the buildings were going to cost. And then what we didn't know was the site work. We went out and we got two bids for site work from two very reputable firms who were, you know, had the wherewithal and the equipment and the knowledge and background to follow the engineering program that had been set up for them. And they gave us some fairly detailed cost structures. And those cost structures were actually a little bit in excess of $60,000 per unit. And with the other costs that go into the sticks and stones and the miscellany that goes into these townhomes, it just, we just couldn't make it work. These, just for your information, going up the hillside are buildings of two townhomes joined together, duplexes, and several triplexes, three together. The townhomes, as we build them, are just a little over 2,000 square feet plus a basement. They've had happily wonderful acceptance where we've built them and just completed them. And we were hopeful to bring them over here. We also brought along some suggested designs for some three-story apartments to be built down at road level, but back from the road, behind where you're presently going to have a, back from the road further than where you're presently going to have a brewery, involved. And there just wasn't an appetite to have any apartments at that time. And we thought, having had a little more experience and time to see the apartments grow across the way and up the road on Empire, that there might be some additional questions and perhaps some additional thoughts about letting us have those, actually it's 30, 39?
36 apartments.
36, okay, I'm wrong. 36 apartment units. And with being able to take the, with being able to take the infrastructure costs and spread it among 36 more units, which is a little bit double of the units we're doing, it begins to look as though one could do a successful project there. Would you show them the apartments?
Sure.
This is the design, preliminary design that was done for us. And there are two buildings like that.
This is the larger of the two buildings.
That's the larger one.
21 units. So the other one is 13 units.
Doctor, you indicated that $60,000 per lot is just too extravagant to be able to make the project work. What is the tolerance level for per unit?
I'm sorry?
What's the tolerance level for per unit, not $60,000 obviously, but...
As low as we've had.
I mean, the $30,000 we end up with is still stretching it, yeah.
Happily, potential rents have gone up. In that same period, actually, it's two years since we've been measuring this. And particularly with the units that are gone across the way. If we only come close to matching those, we can probably make ends meet.
Now, for the board's sake, one of the things is, I remember the last time they came in, one of your concerns was traffic safety, obviously.
Well, I think, just more so for people watching, because this is being filmed televised as well. Can we rewind the tape, just because I think it's a little unclear as to what you initially came in requesting that we were not in favor of, correct? We started with apartment, an apartment idea.
We started with a combined unit.
Okay. Can we kind of give a little history just so we see where...
Yeah, they came to the board with the intent of developing 33 units. The 33 units are permitted by code based on the conventional layout that provided the planning board under the R-120 zone. So they comply with that requirement. If you remember also, you see a shaded area on that plan, green shaded area. That is property that they also own, but they were going to deed that to the county for additional parkland as part of their project. The third component was they would have liked to have put up, and I do believe initially it was 39 units, if I'm not mistaken, within the LaSalle Landing Zone. But you'll note on that plan, it's still kind of true, the one building to the north kind of encroaches into the R-120 zone. And there was a concern for that, how to handle that situation. The second concern I think the board had at the time was traffic safety, traffic, you know, how to deal with traffic safety issues coming in and out. You know, obviously Tony and the staff have looked at the DOT over the years. We've requested a traffic light in certain locations along Empire Boulevard. They're not supportive of that. They're like, it doesn't meet the warrants, the earned warrants for that kind of sign ovation at that location. We looked at other things, but because of the warrants not being met, they're not supportive of anything other than what's there now. One of the things they are supportive of, and Dr. Howlett has been supportive of assisting us in getting there, is to continue the Senate turn lane down Empire Boulevard that was created when the apartment complex up the street was constructed. They put in several hundred feet of turning lane down the middle, which has helped. We are looking to possibly extend that. One of the problems that we run into is you can see the creek comes into the bay, half, you know, about a third from the bottom of the picture there. We need to expand the culverts off the roadway a little deeper so that we can get sidewalks and more driving lane area. That would then allow us to have striking foot in and continue on down.
I think we're getting a little bit too far into the weeds. What I'd like to, because if I'm listening, if I'm listening at home, this is what I'm thinking is happening, is that there will be 33 townhouse units and 36 apartments.
Yes, actually, if you...
And you're almost implying that there's already some townhomes there. So I want people to be clear.
Oh, I'm sorry, no, they're not there by any means, right.
As to what's there now, what was asked and denied, and are we coming back and asking for what was asked and denied already?
Because we denied it. There was reasons why.
That's right, and that's what I'm saying. Traffic safety was one of the big issues.
Can we get clear as to what's the...
Yeah, so initially it came in requesting from the town board the ability to construct 33 townhouses, which is in the R-120 zoning district. The planning board would have jurisdiction over that. In addition, he also asked for you to consider approval of a 39-unit, two-building apartment complex.
And then what happened?
So you did not support the 39 units at that time. As I say, there were several reasons, traffic safety being one of them. I remember specifically talking about that. They then went on to the planning board, and they went through the approval process. There appears to be support on everybody's part. The neighbors were supportive of it, the board supportive of it. I know he did work with the neighbors on several occasions to try and mitigate any types of visual impacts or other concerns they may have had. And I think he's done that. He's now telling us, and the project has been tabled, the planning board's wondering why it's continued tabled, because they've had to continue to table it month after month. So as a result, they asked me to contact Dr. Howlett to find out what the status was. We found out that he's, you know, he can't make a go of it the way it's proposed on his own.
I understand that.
So the next comment was, maybe we can bring him into the board and talk about the rationale for possibly visiting the application for the apartment.
But to be clear, the request, you know, dollars and cents aside, the request that we're just hearing about now is basically the same as the original request minus three apartment units.
That's correct.
Just so everybody's clear as to kind of boiling down what's being asked for now, because certainly as we go forward discussing this as a board, we're certainly not going to decide anything tonight. That I think is important to know, that historically there, you know, we're going to have to go back and look, and look back, and also see, I think, what was foreseeable. You know, what was foreseeable when you purchased it? What was the, you know, was your purchase contract pending approval by the town of what you wished to do?
No.
So, you know, there's some other considerations there that, you know, that some risk that was taken, for sure. But I think that that was, I just wanted to make sure, I didn't want to be redundant, but I wanted to make sure that was clear, because it sounded like we were kind of jumping in mid-story, and I wanted to make sure anyone who was watching is understanding as to what was initially denied, especially if there are neighbors, interested neighbors, initially was denied. What was approved, what has been held in abeyance, and then now what's being brought back to us.
And one of the nuances that's kind of occurred in our discussion since we met with Dr. Howlett, is I noted one of the buildings kind of falls into the R-120 zone. One of the things we would look at possibly would be to look at possibly rezoning that portion of it so it stays fully within the LaSalle Landing zoning district versus flip-flopping over into the R-120. And it might make good sense to do that, just to clean up that property.
So what you're saying, what you're saying, Jim, is that here, this building, this is the line for LaSalle's Landing. So a piece is in LaSalle's Landing, and a piece is in the R-120.
That's correct, Tony. And you'll note, right where your pen was, the, there's another line right, yeah, come right down, there's a property right adjacent to it. That is the old Vella property, which is actually zoned R-120, but it's never been utilized for R-120 purposes. It has always been, it was previously Peter Pecora's office area and truck storage area. It's continued to kind of be vacant on and off. They're not really able to sustain any type of activity down there on a non-urban basis. You might want to look at that as an option as well. I don't really understand why we didn't rezone that into the LaSalle Landing District, only groups did it. But we didn't.
If we could, if we could just go back as it relates to the 33 townhomes. So Dr. Howlett made an application to the planning board and went through the process. The board had not taken formal action, or did they?
No, I, you know, and I've talked to the board, I've talked to the staff supporting the board. I don't think the board has any problem with the application. As I said, there were some neighbors came out supportive of Dr. Howlett's proposal. I think they were just waiting to finalize the details as to what the buildings were finally going to look like, and just, you know, just go through the process of finalizing. It's kind of been held up until he could come up with some financials to make sure that they work properly.
So it had gone to public hearing. The board had worked with Dr. Howlett and the engineers, and they were at a point that they were missing some last-minute information details.
That's right.
And then at that point, Dr. Howlett, Hans, you were going through and actually looking at overall costs. And that's where you ran into the issue of cost per unit for infrastructure, putting aside the cost per lot for land value.
Correct.
Okay. And so would the, did the planning board through an extension letter?
Several, actually.
Okay.
It's been going on for about a year.
So is it still, is it still before the planning board has an active application?
It is, it is still tabled, and the board was, you know, they're getting a little antsy about, you know, it's taking longer than they anticipated. They haven't affirmed, so they don't want them to know what's going on. And that's why I contacted Dr. Howlett.
Okay, all right.
So I imagine that PRC, looking at this new record, latest request, had generally the same concerns they did back from the initial...
Yes, and again, the proposal for, you know, if it were to move forward, if the board saw fit to move forward, the recommendation would be to probably rezone that portion of the property to get it all onto an LB, or LaSalle Landing Zone and not have it.
Crossed.
Because if they, you know, and it fits, because under the LB, I'm sorry, under the LaSalle Landing Zone, the density is lower than it is entitled to be based on the site. He does have some topographic constraints there to the back, where it starts to rise pretty high. And actually, the three stories probably wouldn't be any more noticeable in a two-story building, it wouldn't affect anybody visually. But PRC was a little concerned about just kind of getting everything tightened up and squared away into one district instead of two.
Any additional information, doctor, Hans?
No. As I said before, that we were going to build duplexes and triplexes in the townhomes. And we've done that, and this, I have a couple pictures, if the board would care to look at some of the townhomes that we've just finished.
The LaSalle in Charlei?
Pardon?
The LaSalle in Charlei, yeah. We actually did a lot there, unless you've done. When did you complete that?
Last year.
Yeah.
In 2016. Those are all just two units. I didn't have a picture of a three available, for sure.
For our purposes, we're talking about apartments, though, not townhomes.
Right, yes, I mean, the townhome piece is fully under the umbrella of the planning board. And I just wanted to make sure, kind of following up where Paul was, making sure that the story is, everybody's on the same page with where we are. And so tonight really is the discussion and potential consideration of the apartment component, so. Okay, we will, you know, certainly take a look at that.
Did you want to peek at the block up of the apartments once again?
What I'm going to ask is that, do we, do we have both of these plans here compiled?
If we could borrow them, we should scan them and give them back.
If we could, yeah, either scan them or, you know, because I want to make sure other two board members have an opportunity with them not being here this evening. The benefit of having this taped and recorded, they can go back and take a look at this segment. I'd also like to, if we could, if you could leave those, we can scan them and get them back to you, or however you want to work that.
Yeah, we're doing fine, thank you.
That would be great, and Jim, Jim can do that for the board. And actually, he'll send it to us electronically.
Great.
So Jim, what's the process for this request for substantial change as far as hearing from neighbors?
Well, again, I mean, I'm not certain the neighbors are aware of this particular component of it.
Basically, you're starting all over as a hearing.
Yeah, you could even do an informational meeting if you'd like. I mean, there's several things that would have to occur here. Number one, I would recommend if you're interested in doing so, you could have an informational meeting with the neighbors, where, you know, you've done that with, you know, instead of zoning in the past.
Yeah.
If that worked out well, then you could, the next step would be to let them know that you're supportive of them moving forward. But again, if we were going to rezone, we'd have to do that first, and then go ahead and do the site plan review process as part of that afterwards.
I just wanted to make sure there was a weighing in.
I think one of the, I believe, one of the last information meetings we had was with Barclay, sticks in my mind, where, you know, we had some questions, and we thought it would be good to put that forth to the public. And we had a public information meeting. And from there, I think some different things occurred by way of some updates, changes, changes in designs and what have you. And then we went through a formal public hearing. Again, that was based on the positive feedback that we got from, you know, from neighbors, so.
The other thing is, Tony and the staff have been talking now for some time about how to resolve some of the traffic issues on Empire. And certainly we're constrained, because we don't have authority over the state highway. But we did meet with the state DOT recently, and we indicated to them that we'd like to do something similar to what we did at 441 and 250 with the LUMAM process, where we collect funds from all the developers that come in, and then we can go ahead and then take that money and utilize it for improvements to the right of way to try and make it safer. And certainly, Dr. Howlett has talked to us about this on several occasions. He's supportive of doing it. I've talked to others who are interested in developing, and they're supportive of doing it. I think everybody at Empire Boulevard understands it has to be a safer situation for all of them to be productive and successful down there. So we will be looking at doing that, and certainly he's been supportive of that over the year, last year or two as well. So that might be a little bit of a help that we didn't have the last time that you heard this.
Okay. So if you can leave that, the maps for us, that'd be great, doctor. Thank you, Hans, as well, thank you. We'll make sure that we get this back, and then we'll, you know, give the other board members an opportunity to take a look. And then over the next couple of weeks, we'll bring it back. And certainly Jim can keep you updated as to, you know, where we are on the agenda standpoint. So if you want to, you know, be here or, you know, tune in online, whatever's easiest.
Great.
Okay?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
We'll then next move to our action items. And our first action, first and only action item is 1739 Penfield Road. This was with regards to a dental office. At that location, we held a public hearing on our, at our last meeting, May 3. And the board heard input from the applicant and his representatives, as well as any other concerned citizens that had any interest. So with that, Jim, any additional?
Thank you, Tony. We have with us tonight the applicant's architect, James Behi. Came tonight to hear the board's comments. Since the meeting, as you remember, there were some issues that the town engineer had to work out, dealing with water quality management and drainage. I have had the plans revised and identified the location of the rain garden. In addition, they had done their calculations to determine that it worked properly and not create impacts to the adjacent property owners. Secondly, they also indicated that they would like to place a shed on the property. They've placed a shed on the property and placed the indicated adjacent to the building, which would be built according to the building's design. According to our engineers, they've kind of completed all of the requirements that they requested from the applicant since the last time we were...
Very good. I thought it was a presentation, and they followed, and they looked at the project. They understood where they were building.
So I think the only, a couple of questions that I have, I'd just like to go back to the signage. So indicated you're going to be taking the current structure that's there, and again, thank you for that, and thank you to Dr. Smith for that. The, what you had proposed, and I don't have it with me right, Jim had requested a copy of it, but essentially, you know, you're going to be looking at some type of rock or boulder, having it etched in with that, and then positioned in such a way that gets recognition for the site and everything like that. And the only thing I would indicate that, you know, to make sure that we're within our signed parameters so that before anything is potentially cut, etched, or otherwise, that everybody's in agreement with the size and how that lays out, and make sure that from an ordinance standpoint, that we've got, we're all on the same page, because it's costly to do, and I want to see anybody, you know, get that wrong, overall.
With a big rock, it's a bigger...
Fully understood, and Jim has given us, I think we've had, gone through that in one of the meetings. Before anything is purchased or constructed, we'll make sure that we provide a signed design to you for approval.
That's great, Jim, thank you. Thank you for that, and again, it's to protect both of our interests overall. I think that everything else, at least as I was going down through my list earlier today, we got everything in agreement. I just want to just lastly confirm square footage. I've got a total square footage of 2,050 square for the building itself.
That's right, that's a little bit, I think it's actually 2,034 square feet on the main floor.
Okay, very good. I think the building looks great, fits in great with the character.
I was very pleased with the presentation. I think it's going to look great. And the other thing I would offer is that, you know, we're real sensitive to that kind of gateway into Penfield niche right there. And I think that it's, it looks like it's going to be done right this time around. And just to be, certainly to take back to your client that any aesthetics, any landscaping, any amenities that can really add to kind of a real classy entrance into the town would be very much appreciated.
Will do.
It's a good point. We will have our landscape architect review his landscaping plans with Joe and his group to make sure that everything's squared away for it, landscaping wise. And I'm really pleased that you were able to get everything out of the state right of way, too. It's going to be good for the applicant not to have to pay rent for signage and everything else, and...
Yeah, Gareth was in touch with the DOT and went through all the work that we would be doing in the right of way. The fact that we will be taking the existing monument signed down and replacing with something on our property. So they're aware of all of that, so that's all going to discuss.
Excellent. Board, other questions, your comments?
Could we do a smooth project?
Yeah, we're looking forward to getting going. And Dr. Smith is equally as committed to something that's quality. I think everybody in Penfield's going to be very happy with this.
Okay. Jim, you'll... Jim, you'll put together a resolution for the board for this Friday for, for approval for the 17th.
Happy to do that.
Okay, that'll be great. And then, obviously, there's the dot the i's, cross the t's with getting maps signed off and all of those things, but have you got an idea when you'd like to start the project, other than as soon as possible, but realistically, have you discussed, because you've got some demo to do and go from there, certainly that's some things that you might be able to get started, you know, ahead of time, but any, any sense of when you're looking to get under construction and then your grand opening, or being able to get into the facility?
We're hoping for a summertime start, so we're working on the construction document stage of our plans right now. Site plans are done, waiting for final signatures and approval, and I think we were speaking with Doctor Smith as we left last week, and he said as soon as he can get everything signed and ready to go, he's ready to start, so, you know, exact date, I don't know right now, probably realistically, I would think sometime in July would be, and then it's probably, it's probably an eight-month process to get the building done, so it's going to be probably a springtime that he'll be getting it.
I was going to say, March, April of 2018.
Yeah, 2018.
Okay, very good. Jim, any additional comments that you believe the board should be aware of that we're not already aware of, or it's not already in the record?
We'll have our standard board plate conditions of approval, and there's really nothing outstanding, they complied with everything we asked for. Standard easements and property maintenance agreements, that type of thing, but nothing outstanding in this application.
Okay, very good. That'll be on the agenda for next Wednesday, the 17th, and certainly, anyone is welcome to attend, not required or mandatory, but certainly anyone's welcome to attend, or you can contact Jim the next business day, just to follow up.
Okay.
All right, thank you, great.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, Jim.
Thanks for coming.
All right, we'll move on to informational items, we have one item, this is permit requirements for fences, and Jim, I know you met with, with Mr. Lamagna to review that, and some of the discussions that the board has had about that, and so we can just close the loop on that, if you would?
Yeah, I've met with Mr. Lamagna a couple of times, very nice gentleman, he ran into a situation with his neighbor constructing a fence. Fence luckily did meet the setback requirements for the property line and all that business, but he wasn't really happy with the design features as they were going on, and kind of helped the neighbor get through it. And then came to Tony and I and indicated that the town should have a permit process for fences. So Tony directed me to talk to the building inspectors, we talked to the PRC about it, we started looking at the frequency of requests that we've had for this kind of thing, and we generally don't get requests for permit issuance situations, and I think this is probably the first one we've had in years. We do get a lot of requests and information for where to put a fence, how to put it up. We probably do that maybe once a week during the summertime, but we don't really get requests for, you know, my neighbor should get a permit for this because he's not doing it right, that kind of thing. The timeframe would be very taxing on the staff to be able to have to issue additional permits, because you've still got to go out and you've got to look at it. The other part of that was, right now, if a neighbor puts a fence and it doesn't meet the setback, or if it's over the property line, it becomes a civil matter between the two neighbors and the town's fully not involved, they have to take care of it. If we have to go out and verify the fact that it's on the property line, we, it means we really have to verify the fact the survey's correct, which you can't always do, so that drags us into a situation now, it's not only a civil matter, it's now us as part of the civil matter, so the recommendation was, you know, not to, not to move forward on the permit issuance process, and I think we're kind of supportive of that. If we got to a point where there were several people really concerned about it, that there were issues, we revisited it, but at this point in time, we don't think it's necessary.
And certainly there's the zoning board of appeals in that, when someone, I know recently there was someone who came in wanting to put a fence in a neighborhood where there really weren't any fences, and there's the opportunity for neighbors to step forward then, so there's that process when, when it's, there's a variance is being sought of some sort, so, other than, so it's pretty clear in the code as to what is a fence, what's required of a fence.
And everybody on the staff is aware of what the requirements are, and they share that with the public as they call. I mean, sometimes you get situations where they ask for fencing that's higher than it should be. I know you've dealt with issues where it encroaches into the right of way and we have to kind of bring it back a little bit, you just did that last year. But generally speaking, we don't have a lot of problems with fencing on a year-to-year basis.
I would support revisiting it in the future if staff feels that there's been an uptick of...
We would support that as well.
And I think it's important also to note that Mr. Harrow was comfortable with that discussion and feedback that was provided, so...
But certainly appreciate Mr. Lamagna coming forward with his, you know...
I do too, actually, it was very nice to meet with him, he had a lot of insight, and, you know, I'm sure we'll have a continued, you know, relationship with him over the years on other issues, but yeah, it worked out fairly well, and he understands the situation, so...
Okay, great. That brings us to the end of the agenda, so the May 10, 2017 work session of the town board is officially adjourned at 7:36 PM. Thank you to everyone, and thank you to PCTV.